Okay, um, what we have tonight, um, we have a few things on, on, on deck. We have, um, curriculum director Beth Lambert is going to give a presentation on the curriculum budget. We also have, uh, enrollment projections and staff projections for our schools. That, uh, Steve can help us with, uh, when he joins. And then also Cheryl, we have an update, uh, kind of from where we left off, uh, last week. Where, um, when you look at, um, the budget that we have, and you subtract out the pre-K and you give a rate hold for our, um, teachers', uh, health insurance, that gets us down to an increase of 6.2%. That also takes into account the increased subsidy that we have, but it also takes into account the principal and loan payment for, uh, the elementary and middle school bond. So, um, I guess I'll put it out and Cheryl and I can have an update where there's some recommendations to bring that number even lower, um, before you today. So I want to get an idea of, uh, are you okay if we jump in and have, um, Beth present and then move into the enrollment and staff projections and then finish off with, what we have done, uh, where we sit as of today? Or would you rather start with that before we go into the curriculum and the staffing and enrollment projections?
No, I think I'd rather, uh, have Beth go do that and kind of finish up. I think that discussion as far as once we get into what we're gonna cut is kind of the meat of it. So I think I'd rather not have, uh, Beth linger till the end and then maybe not have time for, you know?
Darn. Second that. Sorry.
Okay, so, um, we'll kick it off with Beth. Do you want, uh, me to run the projection? You want me to share it with you? Beth, what are you most comfortable with?
Can you share it with me? Um, I should be able to use it this time around. I had Joan make sure I didn't screw it up again. So you could make me co-host. I am?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So here we go. Um, whoops. So I wanted to go over first what our district's approach to curriculum is. First and foremost, teacher voices are key. Our, um, curriculum, uh, we have evidence-based curriculum, uh, which, which basically means that it, it has data to back up that it's effective and that it does what we're looking forward to do. Um, our new curriculum is piloted before full implementation. Um, training for staff and administrators is offered and is ongoing. And periodic reviews are built into the five-year plan, as you'll see when I go through that, so that when we purchase a curriculum, it usually runs for five or six years. And then we re-review it. Is it still doing what we needed to do? Are we getting the results we're getting? Is there something else out there that we need to be looking into? Um, so that's what you'll see. So I just broke it down very quickly, our elementary. So Bernie explained this to me. So for, for something to go under my curriculum budget, it has to cross over multiple schools. So there might be something specific that the high school uses, and that would be in Matt Peterman's budget. But if it's something that covers multiple schools, then it falls under my, my purview. So for elementary, um, we currently have implemented the Teachers College Reading, Writing and Phonics Program, K-5. We have our Everyday Math 4, um, in K-5, as well as Mystery Science. We're currently using TCI, we, or Social Studies Alive, K-5. Um, and then we began our handwriting and keyboarding without tiers. This was the year that we implemented. This is our third year. So this was the year second grade began implementing it. Next year it will roll into third grade. Um, for our middle school, we continue to have our Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, grades six through eight. We then move from Everyday Math 4 to Glencoe Math for grades six through eight. We utilize, um, resources, textbooks and online curriculum from McGraw-Hill and Pearson for science. And then we continue to use TCI for US History, Geography and Kids Discovery for grades six, six through eight. For the high school, my curriculum covers the Glencoe Math 9 through 12. So it's a natural progression from the sixth through eighth. They also chose to use both McGraw-Hill and Pearson for their science resources. McGraw-Hill is, um, what we use for our social studies. And then Houghton Mifflin Hardcore is what we use for our world language. So what does it look like in numbers? This is where it gets fun. So let's take a look. And so I tried to break it down. So I want you to notice a couple of things. First, I want you to notice the arrows up at the top. This is, um, showing you my five-year plan. I thought it would be best for you to be able to see the whole picture rather than just this coming school year. Down at the bottom of each slide, because it's, I'm gonna break it up between ELA, math, science, you'll notice the grand total for each of the years. And my goal is as much as possible to keep it as consistent as possible, so that there's no big waves going. So for ELA, um, you can see where, where the money is being spent. The Orton, Gillingham, the $3,000, those are K manipulatives. Those are the magnetic letters and numbers, whiteboards, markers, things like that, that they need for their phonics and for learning, um, learning how to read, learning how to write words. Choice literacy, that is something we subscribe to for our coaches. It is a resource for them. It has articles, it has trainings, it has a bunch of resources that they use to support our teachers. Um, Lucy Cawkins Word Study, that's the Reading, Writing Phonics Program. Handwriting Without Tears, whoops, you can tell, um, grade three will be implemented this coming school year, then grade four and then grade five. What I do like about this writing program is that it not only begins to teach them cursive in grades three and four, but it also introduces keyboarding skills, which is one of the skills, um, that our librarians are working on for technology rubric for students is being able to type. Um, so that plays in really nicely with that, with that, um, rubric that they're working on. And then a Fountas and Penel subscription that is also for our coaches to be able to identify and level books for our teachers. Um, the middle school, we use New Zella. That is, or News ELA, depending on, um, who says it. This is an amazing resource where you can read articles on many different topics and it, you can adjust the lexile level. So you might have, um, multiple lexiles within your classroom. So let's say, um, Steve's lexile where he reads is about an 800. Jonathan's might only be a 500. Mine might be a 400. You can pick the same article, but choose the different lexiles so that the students are all reading the same content, just at the level that they can access. So everybody's still involved in the same conversations in the classroom. And, and being able to access that where they're at. Um, at the high school, the reading, reading resources, those are just different books and, um, different things that the English teachers or other disciplines might need for resources. Um, this year I did add in Read 180. Because it does now cover two buildings, it was just a high school, um, program as a reading intervention. We have, um, introduced it this year through Title I funds, um, in the junior high, and it's being successful. So we're gonna continue. It was just for eighth grade this year. I believe we're gonna make it seventh and eighth grade next year. Um, and then we have funds for classroom libraries. Any questions about the ELA? Or do you want to wait till the end for questions?
No, we do questions as we go along, or we'll forget what we're gonna ask, Beth. The, uh, the classroom libraries, why is there such a, a big drop-off for 23, 24? And then 25, 26 has big numbers in there again.
Um, to be perfectly honest, it's to, to make sure that my bottom line, my overall curriculum budget lines up where it needs to be and is pretty consistent across the five years. Because you'll see as we go through in the 23, uh, 24, 24, 25, that's where our science and math departments, it, we might need to, it might cost us $120,000. Um, so we kind of had to, um, manipulate some numbers to try to keep my bottom line as consistent as possible. Steve and I both felt with the money that I've been using from the CRF funds to enhance the libraries and the book closets in the classroom libraries so that kids, because they can't share, that it was, um, that it wouldn't be too much of an impact, if that makes sense.
No, I got you. So you're balancing, uh, so I was just looking at the ELA. I wasn't thinking of the other subject.
And I can share my whole document with you guys, so that you can see it all flow, flow from beginning to end at the end, if you want.
Oh yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Beth.
Beth, this Jonathan, will you be pointing out anything new?
I will, yes. Yep. And really, the only thing new in my curriculum right now is the Read 180. Um, but then when we get into science, there is something else that's new, but that's pretty much it. Everything else is pretty consistent right across the.
Thank you.
The word. You're welcome. All right. So then we move into math. So this is where you're gonna see the numbers jump a little bit. So in elementary, we have our Everyday Math licenses, K-5. But we also need to make sure that we have money in the curri, in the budget every year for consumables and manipulatives. That's everything from all of the little blocks that they use. Um, they have, they have circles that are cut into different shapes. So it's all those manipulatives that the kids need to use in order to, to learn these new concepts. Um, so to make sure that we keep money in the budget for those. And you'll notice that I did jump it up a little bit in the 23, 24, uh, 24, 25. Because as we know, things just get more expensive, so I have to play, I have to think about that as I move forward in my five-year plan. Um, in the middle school, our Glencoe licenses are six through eight. We need to reevaluate the program this coming school year. And we need to decide if we're going to purchase the program again, uh, and renew it, or do we want to go to a different program? So that's where you'll see in 22, 23, there's $100,000 in there instead of the 27. Um, because if we're gonna purchase new books, that jumps up a whole different level, um, of cost rather than just renewing online licenses. And then in the high school, again, they will reevaluate, um, in the 22, 23 school year, because that is the sixth year of their license. And then we'll need to decide. So if, if we decide in the middle school and that, that we're just gonna stick with Glencoe, that $100,000 will be significantly lower. If the high school decides they want to keep the Glencoe licenses and we don't have to purchase brand-new books, then that number will be significantly lower. So I just wanted to point that out. It all depends, as I said in the first slide, it's teacher voice and choice. If research shows that there's something more effective out there for our students, then it's something we'll look into. Any questions about math? We'll keep going. So now we move into science. So in the elementary, we have Mystery Science licenses. That is a completely 100% online resource for them, um, for K-5. The teachers love it, the students love it. It's very hands-on, very engaging, um, a whole lot of fun for them. And that $18,000 includes the licenses and the materials. I didn't have time to separate them out yet, um, but I did want to put in a line, because in my mind, I want to be able to see the difference between the licenses and the manipulatives that they need. Uh, the middle school, you'll see that, um, they need to reevaluate in, um, 23, 24. We are going to continue with these licenses for the next couple of years, as Bernie just finished purchasing them, um, and all of the new textbooks. Uh, but she was only able to do one year at a time. It's cheaper if you can do six at a time, but it's a bigger hit upfront if you do that. Um, and then in the high school, they had a three-year license that they just renewed. So their third year would be the 23, 24. So then the 24, 25, we would be looking at potentially another big, um, increase, depending if they want to stay with the same textbooks and we don't need new ones. It would just be purchasing the licenses, so it would be much more, much more cost-effective. And then this year, you'll see in yellow, the gizmo for the middle and high school. This is a program that I purchased for this year, um, for COVID. It allows them to view or to do labs in their science classes remotely on digital platform. And the teachers love it, the kids love it, they're engaging, they have kind of like real-life scenarios. Um, and so I took a poll from the middle school and high school teachers, and they all asked if I could add it to my budget, because they really feel that it has, um, a big impact on the students. They're really good for formative assessments to see where the kids are with those concepts. So I told them I would put it in for them this year. Um, and then I kept it in for the next three years. So then you can see my science total at the bottom. Any questions about science?
Um, I don't have one just about science, but I want to ask before I forget about it again. Hey, uh, when we start talking about licensing and everything, is there any potential to look at like regionalization with any of this? It's like going in with other schools to get a better deal, or like, I don't know how this works, so.
To be perfectly honest with you, Dawn, neither do I. I, I, I honestly don't know. I've just begun the conversations with all of my different reps. I would have to look in to see who else in our area is using the same ones that we are. I mean, it's a conversation that I can begin. I can always ask at my York County Curriculum Directors Association meeting. But I don't know.
Kind of an out-there question. Yeah, Matt, just something you could talk about?
Yeah, it's not too far out there, Dawn. We've talked about that in our Southern Maine Regional Service Center. Uh, we hire, you know, obviously it's challenging to coordinate all that work, but we do have an executive director for that regional service center that represents all of our schools. And so that's where we've started being able to look at where do we have some of these shared costs where we might get some more leveraging when it comes to some of these licenses? So for example, whether that's NWEA, uh, whether that's, uh, even, uh, in some situations, cellphone coverage that people have. It may be, uh, what people use, uh, for vendors, for their substitutes. We're looking at all of those, including the licenses that we have acaden, uh, for curriculum. What's challenging though is, uh, usually all the various schools, it never lines up perfectly. Right? We're, we're coming due this year, but the next, the, the other schools are coming due in different years. So that becomes challenging, and it's also coming challenging working with the vendors. Because obviously, that's also something that they are, uh, looking at as well. So those discussions have happened, uh, they have not made their way yet, they've started. They have not made their way yet to, like Beth mentioned, at the curriculum director level for that, so that we can start looking at what is it that we offer here? And do we have more buying power to be able to, uh, go in as a regional service center rather than just an individual school department?
Got you. Thanks, Beth.
I will say, Beth, my fourth grader does love the Mystery Science. For sure.
Yeah. Good, good. I've heard that too. I've watched some of the things and I'm like, I want to do this too. It looks, it, they're really fun. Um, all right. So then we move on to social studies. So this is where we use, um, TCI, that's the Social Studies Alive program. That is, um, an online component. Bernie purchased, uh, teacher licenses for this year. Um, for the elementary, I will be upfront and let you know that the elementary teachers are not 100% happy with it. They find it very cumbersome for their level and not as engaging for the little ones as they want it to be. So that's a conversation that we'll begin having, um, as far as what would be next steps. But for now, it's in the budget, um, and we'll leave it as that until I can get to a point where I can have a conversation with them. Middle school is currently, they enjoy the level of, um, US History and Geography. And then Kids Discovery Online is for sixth grade, and they're enjoying that as well, because that gives a lot of up-to-date, like, real-life articles and, and concepts. Um, and then for the high school, we, Bernie just finished purchasing McGraw-Hill licenses. Economics is the last one that I have to purchase, and after that, their licenses are good, I believe. That's why there's nothing in my budget for the next three years, I believe. And then we'll decide and see what's going on. What Bernie did before she left, um, a lot of our, especially at the high school, the textbooks were 20 years old or more. Um, so she made sure that she put it in the rotation to make sure that that never happened again. You know, that departments weren't just paying for 10 books a year to try to fill in the ones that, that fell apart, basically. So that's what I'm trying to continue to do, is to make sure that we never get to that point where the resources are that old again. All right. So then this is where I clumped a few together. So you can see for Health and PE, there's really nothing in my budget for them. They're all pretty self-sufficient. Theirs, what they're specifically need, what their needs are, they get through their, um, their school budgets. World Language, we only offer at the high school. Um, and I'm actually working with my Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, um, representative to work on getting licenses for them for this coming school year. Because they were using a program that had, um, Adobe Flash that retired, so it kind of threw things off for them. So I've been working to get that up and running again for them. And then for music and art, um, I do use Note Flight for the elementary, for a curriculum for them. They have enjoyed it. Um, Bernie started it, so I continue to do that. I do want you to notice, I know that the numbers look kind of small, but Steve and I were, were thinking that the ESSR funds, to use those to invest in the arts and music for one-time purchases. So that's in the next conversation that I want to have with those teachers, um, to find out what it is we can do. Um, I, I can tell you, like, for the middle school, where they moved into the old high school, the prior high school had a kiln room, because they did pottery and sculptures. Well, she still has the kiln room, just no kiln. Um, so she got, actually just sent me a quote for a kiln from Portland, Sorant, Portland something, I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of it. And it's the kiln and installation and everything for about $3,500. And then she'd be able to offer ceramics to our middle schoolers who have never had that opportunity before. So those are the things we're trying to look at, um, as we, as we move forward over the next few years with the ESSR funds. Any questions about any of these?
I do have questions, but I'll wait till you're done.
Okay, oh, goodie. Okay. Darn it. All right. So then, um, the social emotional learning is something that's fairly new into the curriculum. And there's nothing really specifically earmarked, it's just what are the needs for each of the grade levels? So we made sure that there was money in there for that. Um, and so then you'll see my curriculum grand total for this coming school year. And as you can go across, you see it, it goes up a little bit, but nothing that is, um, huge. That's where the manipulation of some of the different numbers up above come into play. And then the RTI, or the Response to Intervention, is something that's, um, coming over into my, no, it's not coming over, it's been in my, um, in my budget. I did want you to notice though, that we did add Ingenuity to that. That is something new. Um, but it also deals with LLI, that's a reading program, and we always need booster kits for the kindergarten every year. Math supplies for the Title I Math Interventionists, other supplies, behavior coach supplies, Lexia Learning System, that is what our Title I teachers use, um, as one of the online programs to support our students as they go through the program. And then you'll see, the very bottom is my super-duper grand total.
Beth, can you, can you let everyone know what Ingenuity is and, and how we have it this year?
Absolutely. So Ingenuity is an online platform that uses our students' NWEA scores and creates a learning pathway for them. So it takes their scores in reading and math, it uploads it into Ingenuity, and it creates a path based on, um, the skills and knowledge that they showed they don't currently have. So it helps fill in those gaps. So that is something, um, that we, we implemented for the first time this year using, um, COVID funds, because we knew there were going to be some gaps. So we thought this was a way, and it only takes about 20 minutes, um, three times a week. So it's something that the teachers assign to the students, um, on their remote days. We did purchase it all the way up through grade eight. And I know, um, the Rachel White, the one of the math teachers, said she's really, she really likes it and what she's helping her kids do. So, um, we're gonna continue that for the foreseeable future.
And we're throwing a lot of, uh, as always, is in our, um, lexicon, we're throwing a lot of acronyms at you. And so NWA is our universal screener that we use throughout the school district. I think it stands for Northwest.
Educational assessment.
Educational assessment. That's something that is, is used, uh, throughout. And what I like about Ingenuity is, for many years, we'd use NWA, but it was really hard to customize exactly where those gaps were. And so Ingenuity capitalized on that and has done a really nice job so that if that's our universal screener, and it looks like, uh, we receive word from the main Department of Education, that they are getting away from the MEAs and work in moving towards the NWAs just because of how that can be, uh, customized and leveled for everyone. Ingenuity is gonna be important. That is gonna allow us to come back and take that information that we use, that we invest in, but make it more meaningful so that we can really identify, as, as Beth said, where those gaps are and how we can, um, uh, address those.
So with that, oh, sorry. Oh, well, the next part of my presentation is a couple of slides, and it talks about our ideas for summer school. Do you want me to wait on that while we answer questions about my budget?
Got a question.
Okay.
So, uh, in regards to the social emotional learning, I'm wondering who is in charge of that? And as far as curriculum goes and?
That is our, um, our counselors, our district counselors. They work together, um, and they, they work with Steve. Steve, you could probably give some more in, information than this. This isn't a meeting that I'm normally part of. Um, but they work together, um, to go through the curriculum that they're using now. I believe it's Second Step in the middle school. I can't remember the name of it. Uh, is it still Second Step in the, in the elementary as well, Steve?
Correct. Second Step, yep.
So they're the ones, they kind of spearhead it, um, as they're the ones that deliver. They deliver, um, lessons and things like that. And then the teachers also as well, offer, um, Second Step lessons. So it's kind of a group effort.
And that's used throughout elementary, middle and high school, or just for the middle school?
Elementary and middle. It does not go to the high school.
Is Second Step gonna be, I feel like I've heard this program before. Is this something that we feel is the best?
I think.
I think I was at a meeting and that not everybody was a fan of this one.
I think Second Step, right now, when we did, looked, um, most recently, when we reviewed our social emotional curriculum, that was the best program out there. There has been some talk into moving to a different curriculum called Character Counts. Um, but currently, Second Step is the best thing out there.
So it's, okay.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in too, because, um, when it comes to a canned social emotional learning curriculum, that can be challenging, first and foremost. I think if you look at the research, trying to find that, uh, one of the things I think that we found, uh, at the central office level is, um, is there, um, alignment, uh, to the curriculum? Is there fidelity to the curriculum? And I think what you have is, over time, people have kind of taken some liberties to be able to kind of move that around. And so we're not getting the consistency that we were, um, that I think a program probably, uh, requires for people to be able to, uh, evaluate it, um, that way. I know the social emotional learning is also a big focus, uh, not only, um, here in Sanford, but also for, uh, the main Department of Education. And so they've also been putting a lot of time into that and putting out some resources that they recently released. And I think, uh, right now, we want to be able to try to, uh, take what they've put out there and all that research, evaluate that and see if that's something that can also help our needs, uh, in looking at that. Do I have that right, um, Steve and Beth, uh, in terms of what the DOE has released?
Correct, correct, Matt. The other piece of that, um, the Second Step is our universal curriculum, but the, the curriculum is supplemented through, uh, monthly themes, um, at the schools. And all, also, when the school counseling staff do small group lessons, they also have individualized curriculum that they use, um, to conduct their small groups. Um, and so although Second Step is sort of universal, um, there are some alternative, um, some additional programs that are, um, offered to that small group work that the counselor provide.
As well as their work with restorative practices. That all ties into social emotional learning as well. So the circles, those check-in times, um, restoring the harm rather than just, you know, giving consequences to a student. So those are all the different pieces that kind of flow into social emotional.
And Beth, if you look through your budget, it didn't, you look at the page you have here, there's not a lot of money towards that, uh, for resources. So is, are we relying on an outdated Second Step, um, curriculum, for example? Or how often does that come back and get updated?
To be honest, Matt, that is not something I looked into. Um, I'm not 100% sure. To be honest, Matt, that is not something I looked into. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Second Step is, um, gets updated about every ten years, Matt. And when we looked at, um, reviewing, um, updating some of our kits, our Second Step kits, um, when we, they are ready to do another renewal, another update. Um, and so we decided to hold off before we purchased any more kits, um, to reevaluate. Um, you know, we're still gonna be continuing with the Second Step, but, um, it's.
Yeah, cuz rather the, uh, it felt like the timing wasn't right when they, they being Second Step, were releasing their new updated one. It seems like they don't do that every year.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Hey, so, uh, i- if the Second Step, the social emotional stuff is a kind of a big one-time purchase, does that fit into, uh, the federal funds for COVID? Deal with the, uh, the social emotional issues of the, uh, the pandemic?
I believe it, I think it probably would. Cheryl will be the ultimate.
I think that was where I was going. Because, you know, with, I mean, it's like, you know, repeating ourselves, but knowing what is coming ahead with these kids and the increased anxiety and all the studies that, um, you know, everybody knows about what the mental health is right now with these kids and COVID. To me, this, you know, like should be one of the focuses, and I know it is already, but just also, you know, my understanding from just being in the schools for, you know, as a PTA mom for so long, is that a lot of this, you know, when I think about this one counselor at Carl J. Lamb, is it her res- like, is it on the, the, the handful of school councils to go and do this curriculum weekly in the school, then who's, who is doing the curriculum to the students then? And if it's the teacher, so if it's the math teacher or the social studies teacher or whatnot, are they trained?
That was my question.
To be teaching social emotional learning if that's really not up their wheelhouse? And is this the right program to be able to teach the staff so that they can then go and teach and help the kids with it?
So what, um, I'll try to answer your question, Amy. When we first, um, implemented Second Step in the school district, we, all staff members were trained, and it was the expectation that classroom teachers were the, um, folks that would deliver the program. Um, because oftentimes classroom teachers are on the front lines of, um, concerns or conflict that would come up in working with students. And so it was to, to, to sort of spread that social emotional outreach to the classroom teacher level because it's not just our school, uh, students that are providing, um, social emotional learning. It's everybody's business. And so i- it is our school, um, teachers that are delivering the Second Step, um, for the most part. Um, there are times when the, 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 um, guidance staff does go in and do curriculums, but our schools, our classroom teachers are in delivering that program with that.
So with this program, is it something that the kids are getting once a month? Is there, are they getting it weekly, daily?
Depends, um, the Second Step curriculum in particular, it depends on the grade level. Some grade levels have twenty-four lessons in a year, some have sixteen, some have thirty-two. So it depends on the grade and the number of times, um, in a year in which they need to meet, um, to deliver that curriculum. So it's, it's not a set number. I will say that in terms of the, um, some other, some of the other social emotional learning practices that we're doing, um, such as that morning meeting, that circle format in the, in the morning to check in on how kids are doing and their social emotional wellbeing for the day, that's something we're trying to ask teachers at the elementary level at least to do every day. Um, and so, but the Second Step program in particular, it varies depending on the grade level.
I just wanna jump in and say, I think Amy is bringing up a really important point here. Um, you know, we're talking about remediation for English and science and all that as we come out of the pandemic. I, I think the, the mental health of the kids have, has to be, uh, forefront as well. So, you know, if this is an opportunity, it also sounds like maybe, you know, social emotional stuff, Second Step was bought, I assume, eight years ago or something. You know, there's limited resources, you know, this federal money is an opportunity to maybe give that a shot in the arm, some stuff that we need. So I, I'd be a hundred percent behind using some of those federal funds to look into stuff like that. But of course, you know, it's really up to you guys to figure out what would be best, so.
Um, I can tell you that I've already used some of the previous funds trying to think ahead. Um, and as we have benchmarking kits that are used K to eight. And what that is, is those are, those are ways for teachers to sit with a student one-on-one and identify, um, where they need to focus in small group reading lessons, like what is the skill that they might be, that they might be lacking. So because, um, we went remote in March and some of those books went home, so the teachers could try to work with the kids remotely, they didn't come back. So our current kits are, um, not complete anymore. And when I went to go purchase replacement ones, we have second edition, they no longer sell them, they have third edition. So I ended up purchasing with prior funds, um, with the okay of Cheryl, all new third edition benchmark kits for the entire district, um, which was a quite hefty chunk that would have probably taken me and my budget three or four years to purchase. Uh, the same thing happened with the LLI kits, which is the, the resources that the Title One teachers use. Those kits were incomplete because they sent the books home with the kids and they didn't come back. So we've also outfitted the district in those as well. Um, so I've already tried to think a little bit ahead in those, in those areas, as well as I had the librarians work with K to twelve. What is it that you need in your libraries? What do we need in our book closets? What do we, what do our teachers need? Um, and Cheryl, if, uh, we, we spent a lot of money. The librarians, um, were so excited. I said, well, don't get too used to it. But we've now given the teachers the resources for, for lower levels, um, because we know that's where the kids are probably, some of them are gonna come from. So they're reading, they're reading on the same, um, topics, just at levels that they're gonna be able to reach to try to help move them forward when we all kind of get back into this. So we have been working, um, a little bit on that, um, but we'll definitely, we can, we can continue to look at SEL and some of the other pieces too.
Cheryl, can you kind of let people know where all those funds came from?
Um, yeah, so, um, a lot of that money came from the CRF funds, um, so for supplies. Um, we bought, um, the books that Beth was talking about, these curriculum items, um, all through the CRF two funds. Um, and a few of the CRF one funds also, cuz it depended on when she asked me, depending on which one I had more money in. And, uh, yeah, so that's where we bought it from. It's from CRF one.
And I think that if you look at, uh, and I think, uh, Paula and Amy and Dawn have a good point that, uh, as we look at, um, our students and what their needs are, as we are, uh, at a point someday where we'll be transitioning out of a COVID world, um, then obviously, uh, learning loss is a big issue, but so is social emotional learning. And I, so I think if you look at what we have, uh, where the need is and where the gap is, and then where some funds are, we're gonna wanna look, uh, and especially how, uh, it's, it's structured. We're gonna wanna look at those Esser Funds to really help us as a one-time purchase in a similar way, Beth, to what you did in those examples you just used, um, the LLI kits, um, and, uh, whatnot.
I also just wanted to ask about, um, the Ingenuity. So how, how young, um, can that be used for? Can that be used for elementary?
Yep, it's K, K to eight. Um, we did offer it in the high school. It didn't really work as well. Um, but yeah, it is K to eight. So even our little kindergarten kids have the ability to get on it and, um, and strengthen some of those skills.
Has, have they been, have, has elementary been trying it yet?
Yeah, I believe it has been implemented since right before Christmas, I think.
Oh, that's great.
Yep, um, even our remote K to four kids, our teacher.
And then.
We have, so I was just gonna say, Amy, we have some more training for staff, um, during ERD this week and next week.
Okay.
Um, to go deeper into that, so.
The other thing, um, I was wondering, just with, remind me, RTI, what's the?
Response to intervention.
Ah, there it is.
Um, and, and, but Amy, I'm gonna jump in real quick cuz that might be a good reason. Can we let people know what response to intervention is? Uh, because I think that definition is gonna be key because, um, one thing it's doing is trying to be able to intervene prior to getting to a special education service situation where we can be able to make sure that we have, uh, tried, uh, interventions to be able to help address where there are learning challenges or learning gaps, uh, with that. And I, I, for me, I always look at RTI as, um, i- its response to intervention, but at its core is just good teaching. At its core is just teaching to be able to come back and help our students, uh, to be able to do that. So when you see, and we all know, um, how much of our budget is special education, anytime we can put funds towards RTI, that's helpful. And in, in the past, what we have done is we had some people assigned to intervention roles. We didn't have the resources. And in last year's budget especially, we were working hard to be able to not only provide the people, but also give them the resources so that we could make an impact, uh, in that area for, for kids so that we can do everything we can to get them to grade level or beyond.
When, when you say the art, okay, so I get you. So the RTI is prior to getting them, just trying to prevent need, the need for special education.
Right.
So while I'm looking at this budget, and you had sent it the other day, and I, I like went through it, I, I'm not, is it, you, Beth, since you're the curriculum director, do you order curriculum for special education, or does that come out of their budget?
That comes out of.
It would make sense for you to be directing the curriculum that special ed would be doing.
There are some districts where the curriculum director does purchase and, and oversees curriculum for the district in both general ed and special ed. That is not the case in Sanford. Um, Stacy is in charge of her curriculum for her special ed. I'm in charge of curriculum for general ed. Um, I don't know how long it's been that way or what the reason was for it, but that's, that's where it stands right now.
So she would order her own, do you, anybody have any idea what curriculums they're using?
They use, um, Number Worlds for math is their primary curriculum in math. In reading, they use Lynda Moot Bell. And, um, starting to use Read 180 at the high school.
Hey, Amy, that might be a good question to put on the back burner until we have, uh, special ed here in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, I'm noting.
And then, Amy, I also wanna mention, in Title One, we have our own curriculum that we use. And so Title One curriculum, usually we work with the curriculum director to make sure our, um, intervention that we're using in reading and math aligns with our regular ed curriculum. So that's just another piece.
Well, you know, it was interesting. So last week when we were seeing kind of like the needs that Matt reviewed, um, was the Scholastic News. And I know that my kids have loved that and, and I wonder is, why that can't get put in? Title One funds wouldn't cover Scholastic News?
Title One funds, um, in our district currently, we are in a targeted needs, um, model for, um, services. So what that means is that the funds we use for Title One, they have to be used for students who are identified, um, following criteria to be eligible for the Title One program. If you're eligible for Title One, you have to be significant behind, significantly behind your peers in reading or math in order to qualify. So there's a, a process. Um, in some districts, they call it school-wide, where you could use your title funds to, to purchase things like, um, uh, the Scholastic News for everyone. Currently, we're not under that model. So that's why I, for that.
Any other questions?
One more, I guess. I was waiting for somebody else to jump in. Um, so I know that I had already kind of warned, like, not warned you, but like mentioned that I was gonna ask about Lucy Cawkins.
Yeah.
Um, just because I've, I've had a lot, and I feel like I'm hearing that people are like fifty-fifty on it. And I, I've read some articles just because, um, I have one that definitely is, um, a year behind in reading. And so it's a, something I'm, um, got my, my eyes and ears on. Um, has there been discussion, is the, like, and it's not to micromanage, I guess it's just more of a question, just because there's so much discussion about that program. And then there's new articles coming up that she's changing her tune. And I just, with the, with all these kids that are not reading and writing right now, especially the kids who are home only in the building two times a week, and I know my own kids are definitely not reading and writing as much when they're at home. I'm just wondering what the, like, you know, is, is that the best program, I guess, to kind of help these kids come back?
It's a good, it's a very good question, and thank you for sharing that article with me, um, a couple of weeks ago. It's one that I'd already read. Um, so there's two different, there's two different camps, so to speak, for teaching reading. There's the whole language camp and there's the phonics camp. Um, the whole language is where you're teaching the kids to look at words in their place and take cues from the pictures and different things like that. Then you have the other side, the very abbreviated explanation of the phonics, where they're learning each letter sound individually, how they go together to make words. Um, Lucy's beginning program took kind of a whole language approach, but she has now incorporated a phonics piece to her program for K one and two. Um, and it was, it was going well for K and one, and then we implemented grade two this year. And then COVID hit, and it reduces the amount of time that you have instruction for it. So elementary was in a really good path, I feel, um, from what I've seen and the changes that have happened since we've implemented Lucy, um, or the Reading Writing Phonics Teachers College Program. Um, but unfortunately, in the world we're living in right now, it's, everything's kind of taken a step back. Um, so I think it's doing the job it needs to. I would like to see the phonics be implemented for a few more years to really see how that's gonna help the kids grow as well. Um, Steve, is there anything you wanna add? You've worked with it more than I have.
No, I think, um, we, um, we started with writing, Amy, and implementing Lucy Cawkins' writing into a writer's workshop model. And basically, a writer's workshop model is you have ten, fifteen minutes of direct instruction, and then you give kids an opportunity to write, and the teacher, um, works with individual kids and small groups of kids. And so that model and writing, we found to be very successful. Um, our kids were making great strides in writing. Um, we traditionally have done the similar, um, model in reading. Um, but each teacher was developing sort of their own workshop of what reading instruction would look like. And so bringing in Lucy Cawkins, early for the first time in this district, brought some consistency to our reading instruction. Um, and we were starting to see some great gains. I will say that one of the biggest, um, um, critics or, or criticisms of the Lucy program um, from folks is that phonics piece, that phonics and if it, um, I'll leave it at that phonics piece and not being part of it.
Right.
Um, that was never her intent to say phonics is not important. Um, so much to the extent that she created her own phonics program. So what we did is we have now implemented phonics in K one, two. So with the Lucy phonics program, with her, um, workshop model program, really, we're hoping that we see some, um, good results from this. The problem is that, um, we haven't had an opportunity to implement all these components together yet because of COVID. Um, and so, um, when, when kids come back, I, I think that, um, we'll be able to take off, meeting where they're at. Um, really, Lucy's about developing, uh, lifelong readers and, um, developing kids that are excited about reading. Um, but I will say, um, if you ask staff, um, it's very intense. It, it takes, um, a lot of skill on the teacher's part. Um, there's a lot of planning that's involved. Um, but at the end of the day, I feel like it is, um, you know, what's right for our kids. And I, and I could go on and on, but, um, that's a brief, my brief feeling about it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say, Amy, I said I would end, but I do will say, though, if you have a student with a disability, so if you have a a student that has dyslexia, um, they're gonna need a specialized program. And so that is one of the things that in as we look at our elementary reading program, I wanna say maybe about four years ago now, or three years, um, special ed is now implemented the Lynda Mood Bell program to test to address students that have dyslexia. But that's something that wasn't um as explicit before. So I think that's another new piece that has been added um in our elementary program. If you look at special education, um Title One i- in regular red, so. I feel like we're in a good spot, we just need COVID to end and and get back on track.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so it's probably a good time to move on to uh the next section you got, Beth?
Sure, that's what we call summer programming proposal. I just want you to notice that it is a proposal, I've just started putting the pieces together, but it's for the next three summers, summer of twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. So here's kind of where our thought process is going at this point. So for high school, we're looking for credit recovery for math, English, science, and social studies. And the art teachers asked if we could add art fundamentals. Without that art fundamentals class um behind them, a lot of students can't go on to take painting or drawing or ceramics. Um, so they asked if we could do that. Um, our librarians came up with a wonderful idea of having a bookmobile that went to different areas of town over the summer to get books in the hands of kids. Um, I was really excited about that, so that's something we're looking at. Um, art band and chorus wanted to have enrichments. And then the University of Maine system is offering one free college course per student um this summer that we just got information from, so that is something that we will look into as well. And these are just some beginning steps, there might be some other pieces in there that we'll put in. Um, and then for the middle school, class recovery uh for core subjects. Again, a bookmobile that fits their needs, art band and music enrichments, that was something that those teachers were really excited about. They have skills that still need to be taught, and they think this would be a great way to do it, and um possibly some STEM enrichments as well. And then for elementary, we have our Title One program, which we run every summer anyway. Again, the bookmobile, art, music, and we were thinking about potentially trying to work with the rec department this summer um to support their program with academics. I've left a message with Lori Hegarty um last Friday, I haven't heard back from her yet. Um, this was something Steve and I kind of talked about, is there a way that we can bring in some some academics, some reading and some math and some writing, maybe some art and music to those kids that are there all day for the rec program anyway, and kind of work together? Um, so those are just some of the beginning ones. And then here's the hard part, um what's it going to cost? About the only number I could give you was that for teachers, it's thirty dollars and seventy five cents an hour. Um, for teachers to teach Title One, to to work with with um students in whatever capacity, whether it's um credit recovery or enrichment. Um, I did talk to Holly Hartley, and she was very excited to be able to offer breakfast and lunch to our students that might be part of our summer program. Um, transportation, that's a big key, especially for the high school. Um, we don't always get a lot of, once transportation for summer school was taken away years ago, our numbers for summer school went down because a lot of these kids have no way to get there. So that is definitely key to get kids engaged in learning over the summer. Um, supplies are gonna be needed. Uh, a vehicle for the bookmobile. Um, my first idea was maybe one of the small buses that were purchased um for use at SRTC could be a potential use for it. And then, of course, books for students. Um, so those are just some of the initial costs, and again, I have no prices for any of them. Um, but that's kind of where our our thoughts are right now.
So I'll I'll jump in, Beth, because this is, this was pretty exciting when we started this conversation. Because um obviously, when we have the ESTRA funds that we have, and it's looking at learning loss and with the impact of COVID, we really ha- have some gaps and some things to fill in. I think one of the ways we were coming at this initially was we were trying to get away from what does that old traditional summer school look like? Where it's mostly remedial, I have to come back in, I don't really wanna be here, my parents are making me be here, or I need this uh particular credit so that. And trying to get more around the core um principles of instruction, but also trying to tie that in with some of the other things that we have going on. So when you hear about uh lunch and breakfast, that's something that we can connect with Holly Hartley with through our summer lunch uh program to be able to help that. Beth mentioned looking at the rec department because we can't have this all just be something where um it is just drill and kill when it comes to instruction. There also has to be some other things, it could be uh field trips or some other pieces of trying to connect some incentives for people to come back and be able to have this focus. Uh, those of you who remember Kids Club uh that happened after school, how you can always find that balance to say, why are we extending? If you extend the school day, it can't be just more about more of stuff. Uh, it has to have a creative approach. So I think that that as we start these early discussions, that's kind of the way we were coming at it with some of the energy to say, this is, we have a way to redesign some of summer school. Let's not look at it like it always was, the old image that we all had, that it was uh with that. How can we tie some things in with these funds to be able to help our kids uh and also get them engaged uh in the in it? Anything, Beth, you wanna add to that? Steve, you wanna add to that on some of our uh initial discussions?
I think you and Beth covered it for me.
Yeah, I don't, I think it sounds exciting, I think it'll be a great chance to get our kids, hopefully, knock on wood, things are settled down by by the summer, get them back in the school, get them uh up to levels. And I I like the fact that you're talking about making it not that, hey, you're just, like, you, would you say kill and drill? Was that the term? I don't think anybody wants that, so.
Yeah, it it and it's important because we realized last week when we were looking at our funding, you see what we have, but we also have other needs. And so we've identified summer programming as a priority for that. And if you've got three years worth, we really wanna make sure we've got that planned out and looking at what are those things we can already combine with that are already happening and be able to piggyback with them uh with that and and try to identify what those costs are. We're trying to front load that a little bit more. Uh, it's gonna be an item on our administrator meeting this week so that we can start talking with summer school and start getting these planning um components in place to be able to look at that, because that that's gonna be a real big piece for us to be able to also see how we can leverage those funds to make the most impact, not only with just with summer school, but in other areas as well.
Yeah, what are you guys considering for like a timeframe? Like, you know, July, August, like, I'm not sure how long you're planning on running stuff, or is that not even really discussed yet?
It hasn't been discussed yet, and I think some of that is finding a balance of uh trying to find that out with um uh a model that, once again, doesn't overdo it. Where's that sweet spot for people to be able where it can be impactful? The other thing we talked about was a program that we offer, but there might be some other resources out there for families who might wanna do some things on their own. They might wanna do some things on their own to help where maybe more so than they normally would in a summer period um for that. And so those are some other resources we can look at beyond just what we're doing by us providing the teachers. There's some other things to be able to look at, try to look at it like more of a menu for people to come back and say, hey, where are my needs and what do I have for options to be able to help with that?
Matt, are any of you fellow superintendents offering summer school, and would there be a sharing opportunity regionally?
Uh, yeah, we haven't had those discussions yet, it hasn't come in, but I'm sure that when people have those funds and it's identified for learner loss for the challenges that we have, that that can be something that can be looked upon um for that, absolutely.
Well, I wonder if if you you need instructors, right? So maybe Sanford doesn't have enough teachers, maybe some of the teachers from some of the other schools might be willing to come to Sanford or ours to theirs to cover a lot of bases uh regionally.
And I and and a good point, Jonathan, and that gets back to, you know, what are we gonna offer for a timeframe? And one of the challenges too is we've gotta make sure we've got the work capacity, people to be able to fulfill this. And I know right now, when it comes to how our teachers have been working and dealing with COVID, um, it's gonna be a big uh, it's gonna be challenging for them once the summer hits for people not to wanna just kinda take a break and relax and breathe a little bit because of the intensity of what's been going on. So we we've gotta also develop a program in mind that, in addition to being able to meeting students' needs, but we also wanna make sure we can get the staffing. And that may be something, Jonathan, that we can open up. I know when we do our posting, we do our posting that goes beyond, it's not an internal posting just for the Sanford School Department, it goes external, and that's where we have had some people who in in the past have participated in our uh summer programming that do work in other districts, uh because either they're looking for those opportunities or in their uh current district doesn't provide it. So um it's something that I think we wanna put on the radar with the idea of regionalizing, see if there's a way that we can share services.
Makes you wonder if Acton would, just because we end up merging with them in the high school setting, and they're right down the street.
Yeah.
Yep. Sounds good, we're, I I'm I'm looking forward to uh hearing more about it once you settle in with some details, so.
We will work on that.
That was a great preliminary uh proposal there, Beth.
Thanks.
Excellent work, as always.
Thank you.
Um, do you have anything else, Beth, or is that it for you?
I am good for tonight, but thank you for asking.
Anybody have any uh any final questions for Beth? Yeah, it looks like you're off the hook now, Beth, I think Amy grilled you enough already, so.
All right, she told me she was gonna, so that's okay.
Heads up, isn't it? Okay, so what do we have next, Matt, uh enrollment stuff?
Yep, so uh as we mentioned last week, that was something that the uh school committee had asked for, was coming in to see where we were for some enrollment projections and some staffing data so that we could be able to share that um uh throughout the district uh for that. So um to tee this up a little bit, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, who can kinda help give you an idea of of how this data was compiled.
So um the data you're looking at at the top portion here is our enrollment data. And right now, with our enrollment data in the district, it's hard to tell because we have students or uh some students have left us for homeschooling. Um, we've had students that have moved out, and we don't have records, we have students that have moved to town but have not registered yet. Um, and so we tried to figure where would be a good spot to start. And so where we started was by looking at our July first enrollments um from last summer um before we really had anybody move out to go to homeschool or anybody move in um as sort of a guidepost for these numbers. So if you look at the top here, pre-K sixty four. We have a cap of sixty four students in the current pre-K programs that we have. There are four programs, so if you go down, you'll notice the next number there is kindergarten. You looked at the past three years of what our um enrollment was for incoming kindergarten students. Um, it raised from two seventeen down to the high one nineties. Um, we're expecting, because of parents keeping their kiddos out during COVID, that that number is going to be a little bit high. And so that's why you see a two forty estimate um for incoming kindergarten students for next fall. Now, if you scroll down from that, from first grade all the way down to twelfth grade, what we did is we took those numbers from this current year and we moved them to their next grade. So this year, currently in kindergarten, we have about a hundred and eighty one, so we just took those hundred and eighty one and we moved them down to um first grade. You'll notice that each building is here, you have the number of students, the number of teachers, and then you have the classroom teacher ratio. So if you look at CGL next year, we're expecting, you look at grade one, there's sixty one students expected for four teachers, which would give us fifteen, sixteen in a classroom. And you could follow that across, at MCS, we're projecting the same. Then at Willard, we're expecting the same number of students with three teachers. Now, you may say, well, how's that possible? You have four teachers at MCS and four teachers at CGL, but you only have three at Willard. Can't we get by with only three? Important thing to know as an elementary administrator for a number of years is the numbers at early elementary fluctuate a whole lot. Um, you don't know for certain how many kindergarteners we coming are coming into us. We also do not know first grade, oftentimes is a very, a number that um can fluctuate quite a bit um as new families move into town and move out of town. So those numbers there, we could adjust a teacher based in, based on where our enrollments are um come June or come August. Um, we've mainly season adjustments in that. So basically, up this top graph here is your um enrollment. So you notice the elementary enrollment numbers here are um decent. Um, we've had numbers higher. Um, but this, we feel like is a pretty good estimate based on our current circumstances with COVID. If you go to the junior high, you'll notice the numbers creep up. The numbers creep up because kids become more self um sufficient. Um, these numbers here are pretty decent. Uh, we have had higher numbers at the junior high. In fact, this year's numbers are higher, but um the expectation is they're gonna go a little bit lower. Then at the high school, it's hard to do that same teacher ratio because you're talking about classes and um different courses that um students need. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to the top part, Matt?
Nope, that uh that outlines it pretty much in terms of people understanding where did these numbers come from. So that's where, that's where we plugged in, and obviously with COVID, it's challenging uh to be able to do that. Down below there, Steve, do you wanna talk about the grade one position to grade three and the MCS grade one teacher back to kindergarten?
Oh, sure, sorry. This, th- those notes down below, we had to make some adjustments um based on, when we moved everybody to the next grade, we had some inequities um in terms of class sizes. So these are current, as it stands today, adjustments we are making to next year's um teaching rosters um that are are reflective of um the numbers above. So a grade one position um is going to be moving to grade three. At MCS, a grade one teacher is gonna go back to kindergarten. And a Willard grade four teacher is gonna go to CGL, teach grade four. So we have had some internal shifts um that have had to, that had to happen. Um, if we have retirements in those buildings, um we, a teacher may not have to um move buildings um if they take the the vacancy that's created by the retirement, but those are just some shifts we made to accommodate. Anybody have any questions about the top part there?
Steve, it's Jonathan, I just had a question regarding, when you, when you move a teacher, I mean, people get comfortable in in their school and their classroom, their friends, how, what's that like when you're talking to someone? This is more of a personnel type question, but I'm just curious.
So besides when we um, I'm gonna say when we did all the moves and the shuffles where we closed buildings, take that off the table. If we're a normal year, if I was a building principal and I knew that I had to move somebody, oftentimes what I would do is to talk to staff and say, just letting you guys know, next year, we're gonna have an opening grade four. If anybody's interested, please let us know. Um, the majority of times, I usually had somebody who'd come to me and say, you know what, if you want me to move, I'll move. If you need somebody to move, I'll move. And sometimes it's teachers to say, what, I need a change, I need a a different change at a different grade level um with that. If nobody wants to move, and we have to move somebody to a different building, we try to post it and advertise it um and see if anybody applies. Um, but then if it comes, um, you've asked for volunteers, nobody volunteers, we post it, nobody applies internally. And sometimes administrators, we have to make that difficult, the decision to say, you're the person that needs to go to that position. And sometimes it's, it it could be based on the team, how the teams work together. Um, it could be based on a teacher's skill set. Um, so it's complex.
I I'm sure it is, I just, no, I appreciate the answer, I I didn't think it was a easy, easy task, I'm just, thanks, thanks for sharing.
And most of the ti- most of the time, John, at the elementary level, um, usually things work themselves out. Um, with retirements and having opens, usually things work themselves out.
And i- if people remember just recently when Lafayette closed and when we had to close MCS for a year, we did have a lot of shuffling and a lot of people being. We did have a lot of shuffling and a lot of people being moved around, that was just the nature. And so we did make some decisions at that time uh, as a central office team. Because a lot of what we were looking for was trying to make sure that uh, our schools were balanced. When it came to staff and specific grade levels, so that we could be able to have uh, you know, a nice mixture of veterans and new teachers. We didn't want to be in a situation where uh, you might have a particular school with a grade level where it was all newbies, for example. Uh, or all veterans and, and so we've done some of that work uh, Jonathan and as you, as you realize. It, it's not always uh, that can be challenging, it's not always easy.
No, it's just nice to get a little, he- hear a little bit of what's going on behind the curtain, that's, that's, thanks for that.
Okay, so Steve, we'll go down below here, we'll break it down a little bit lower in terms of uh, what it looks like um, for staffing.
So you guys had um, some questions last week in regards to sort of ratios in regards to staffing. So if you look here, um, the second column over is school counselor ratio. Um, at CGL, we have one counselor for three seventy-five, MCS one for three forty, Willard one for three hundred and sixteen. At the Sanford Middle School, we have three for nine hundred and forty-seven, which brings it down to three ninety-five. At the high school, we have five counselors for ten thirty-seven, which is a two oh seven ratio. And then we have one um, counselor at SRTC, um, and that number there is four fifty-four. Um, that is not including the Sanford students that attend SRTC, we didn't include those um, numbers twice. And at the Bridge School, um, we have one counselor that sort of works out of that school. And then you can follow over, there are some other positions that I put in here that I thought you might find useful. We have administrators, um, administrative assistants, FT means our full-time. And SY is school year, our school year administrative assistants typically work five days at the end. Um, and five days at the beginning and before school begins. Um, allied arts, that's your music, art, um, PE and health. Um, those are your um, breakdown there in terms of ratios, librarians, nurses and nursing assistants. So that's that first chart up there. And then if we broke it down, go down further, um, once again you have the projected enrollments. You have IEP coordinators, IEP coordinators are the staff members that are involved in um, holding um, meetings for students with special education needs. Um, to determine program and placement. Resource from teachers, um, those programs are where students go for a portion of their day to receive instruction using the areas of math. Um, or language arts. Self-contained, those are our behavior programs where students usually spend the majority of their day. Self-contained life skills programs, um, and then special education social work. Um, special education non-social work. So the difference there, want to point this out, a student in, to receive um, social work services um, through the school department. Um, they even need to have special education services if they are K through eight. The only non-special ed social worker that we have is at the high school currently. Now, we do have a, um, a service that is provided to our students called Sweetser. Most of our schools have two Sweetser counselors um, that are housed in the building. Um, the issue with Sweetser is they um, require insurance. And so sometimes, once in a while, we run into a situation where a student is unable to access um, social work services in the school day. Um, because of insurance. Um, then the last position is outreach, we have two outreach workers in the district, Brent Coleman. Um, who you guys know well, who works with um, students who have been expelled. Brent has expanded his role this year to spend a lot of time at the middle school. Um, working to engage students who are, are not engaging um, in distance learning and um, other issues. And then we have Leo Marx, who works at the elementary level, who works with families and to try to um, help parents to engage kids in school. So those are some basic um, ratios that I thought you might find helpful um, as we go through this um, budget conversation. Anybody have any questions or you hoping to have something that's not there?
I, I have a question, um. The numbers that we have, the ratios for guidance counselors to students in, in all of the schools really. Is that the, the typical ratio for most elementary schools, middle schools and high schools in the area? Or? You know what I mean, Mike? Is that a tipi- it just seems kind of crazy to have. It, it's just an observation to have one guidance counselor for three hundred and seventy-five elementary school kids and so on and so forth. Is that a typical ratio?
Well, the, the EPS formula is like one in three something, right? I can't remember it off the top of my head, but. I don't know if you guys know it.
Oh, I do not know the n- number off the top of my head and I don't want to say something that's incorrect. Um. I will say, Paula, um, in my time when I was at Lamb, our enrollment ranged from right around five hundred to five seventy-five. And we had one to one and a half counselors during that time. I think the, the service we don't have in our elementary schools, in the middle school, um, is social work. For those students that don't have insurance, um, I see that as a position that's more um, in need at the elementary school. Uh, it'd be great to have another counselor, um, but um, I think if you ask our elementary counselors, the middle school counselors, I think a social work um, position is what is lacking and what's needed.
Okay.
And then the challenge there too Paula is, right, you look at that number three seventy-five and you say, whoa. And then you also look at and say, well, it's also a number if we put two there, then that number becomes a lot smaller too. Um, and so that, that's, that's the challenge. I think one of the things we can do, and we do have our school counselors uh, presenting at next Monday, uh, plan to uh, meet, uh, present at next Monday's school committee meeting next week. But I think uh, that may be something for us to do a, a comparison around area schools to kind of see how they're coming at it. In terms of uh, where they are for their uh, for their resources.
And as far as um, the social workers, is there, this might seem like a really naive question, but is there a way to hire more social workers through COVID funds? Just to cover the social emotional um, weight? That we are accruing right now and that we will have for the next couple of years?
Yeah, I think, I, I would think that uh, as we look at the application that we have to put in. That is something that we can directly relate to COVID. And so I think in being able to do that, that's a qual- that would be something that qualifies. I think it's going to have to be part of the discussion for us to see how we want to be able to uh, prioritize those funds. In terms of uh, uh, how it comes back and filling either current positions or how we can also look to expand. Uh, knowing that, like we've talked about uh, recently, that this isn't something, this is more of an interim, short-term type of thing. It's not going to be forever, it's going to be helping us transitioning back um, from a COVID world.
I guess, I mean, numbers don't lie, so when I'm looking at SRTC. One counselor for four hundred and fifty-four, now I realize that those are for other kids, but when they're in the building half the day. We have to take kind of like, you know, joint custody, still got to take ownership of them, um. Do they have, I'm sorry, can you go up a little bit? There we go, so do they have um, way up top? Does, when you had said IEP coordinators and whatnot, and I'm, I'm just thinking about some of my sons, friends and whatnot that have IEPs but are going to be applying for, to vocational. Is there, who does IEPs and all that? Because four hundred and fifty-four students for one school counselor seems like a lot. And who deals with the IEPs and all that for them? And then when I look at the bridge numbers. Doesn't really seem like up to twenty-four, so I don't know what those numbers are right now. But if you're got a full-time school counselor there and then you've got one for four hundred and fifty-four, you see where I'm going there?
Yeah, I think at SRTC, you've got sending schools and you're right, Amy, there are students who are attending our schools. Who also have, uh, may have uh, IEPs. And if so, there needs to be a connection from SRTC with that student back to their home sending school to be able to do that. So yeah, there is uh, a lot of coordination that is going on in terms of trying to make sure that that information is flowing. And, and ways that can be there to advocate and support students.
I mean, it would be interesting to know just with, I mean, numbers like, don't lie, like I said earlier. Like how many of those SRTC students have IEPs, five oh fours and all those? Because that's, I mean, that's a lot for one person to have to try to manage.
Yeah, no, we can check on that to get a better handle on that, um. Um, like, cause I don't, I don't, I don't have a good grasp of what those numbers are, I'm sure they rotate and change from year to year. Uh, with that, but I, we can look into that and get to those numbers exactly.
Amy, I think what you're saying is it's simply not manageable. And if I, question I had. Question I had Matt was, when I, when I look at Bridge, and I know that's a different world, probably you're worried that I'd ask this, but you know, one to twenty-four. And I, and I know that's a heavy lift at Bridge, but is that a full-time position?
Yeah, it's a, it's a counselor, but I think also it probably takes on some other roles that might be a little bit different from what maybe a traditional counselor would do. But that's probably something better that um, Stacy Bissell could speak to rather than me trying to work my way through that.
Gotcha, good question, I'll save it. The fact of the matter is, if we had plenty of money, we'd have triple the counselors because we need them, the kids need them. So, so do I, but um.
That's another problem.
But, yeah, right, I mean, you all knew that, so anyways. So, yeah, I mean, it's. Go ahead Steve.
I will say that main care um, has been a lifeline for our kids in terms of receiving mental health services. Um, you know, we talk about Sweetser, we um, we had one Sweetser at Lamb, we, we were able, were able to fill two. And even then, there's a, there's a weight load sometimes, but main care has provided access for a lot of our kids. I just want to say that, um, even though we, even though we have some that still are not, aren't eligible for main care and don't have insurance or their insurance doesn't, Sweetser doesn't accept their insurance. Main care has been a lifeline, so.
Well, I think that brings up a, a good point too is uh, you know, where is our role as a school department in this, you know? We're supposed to be providing the education, you know, at what point is it more our, our, kind of our responsibility to just connect them to these outside services? Versus trying to create those services in the school, and I think there's a fine line there, so. Uh, okay, any more questions on this, we ready to move on to the next section? Uh, it sounds like we plop forward, Matt, what do we got next? Okay. Are you just building suspense Matt, getting us excited for the next part that's coming?
Yeah, you can say that, drumroll please, I'm actually a little slow just getting it going, but we can get there, okay.
Maybe for the next year.
Yeah.
All about production quality.
Sure, yeah, I'll um, see if Sarah can help me with that. Alright, um, okay, so if you remember, uh, as I mentioned last week, um, we did kind of give you an idea of our, our approach to the budget. And kind of like rolling it over and turning the page. And so um, we were walking our way through a pretty significant increase, even with uh, even with the um, extra subsidy. And so we did go through that and take some significant chunks out of that. The first one was pre-K, uh, that was over nine hundred thousand dollars. And then we also, uh, we had originally put in a five percent insurance increase. And we uh, felt comfortable putting uh, for our Harvard Pilgrim Plan, putting plans, putting forward a rate hold. So that got us down to a six point two percent increase. Uh, and then I'd like to walk through some of the other things that we have here, which would be uh, some other um, potential adjustments or cuts to the budget to help bring that six point two percent increase down. So in athletics, uh, we did um, and that we're in the budget currently. Uh, we're looking to cut um, the national conference uh, cost that was in there uh, for forty-five hundred. We also have middle school uniforms and a middle school soccer goals that we feel that uh, we could cover that. In this year's budget with some carryover funds that we have. Um, and then working down at CGL, there's some replacement shades and screens that we feel uh, do qualify. We can cover under the elementary bond. Uh, we also made some cuts there for art, uh, two new, uh, and we also feel like in carryover, we can get two new chairs that were in the budget. As well as the bond for the security mirrors and magnets. At the high school, looking to cut the after-school detention. Uh, at MCS, we had a duplicate, I think that was really a uh, duplication in the budget for the scholastic. So we're pulling that out. SRTC, uh, another um, cut that we think we could get covered um, this year. And then a big one in technology that uh, that the bond under the technology piece uh, can cover that. And so those are what we're recommending right now. Those will come out uh, to a total of uh, a hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, is what they add up to, and then if you look at where the budget comes down. Um, between that, we would be uh, ninety-eight thousand of that would be uh, amendments, adjustments. And the other part would be using some carryover for that, so it comes down to uh, a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. And so what I will do is I'll fast forward down below, we'll come back to this. But if you come back and you look at where we were, we started, as I said, at six point two percent. If we're able to come back and take that down of those, of what we um, are recommending there. That will bring a six point two percent increase down to five point two percent. Uh, a significant part of that five point two uh, percent or um, of that is the three hundred and eighty thousand, uh, the four hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-two for the new debt. So that's something that we're already coming back, that's going to have us at um, uh, that increase. So that's knowing where we just had some recommendations, obviously. Uh, that's pending your approval in terms of uh, some of these things to make the potential cuts. I did, as before we go and uh, talk further about that, there are some potential adds of some things that were not in the budget. And so we did break those up, these are not listed in any particular order. Um, it's more of uh, alphabetically. And over here in this column, the first column, we did put a priority there. In terms of what priority that would be, obviously one would be a higher priority for that position. Uh, then a two, uh, three would be the um, least priority. And so here's what the cost would be associated with those positions. And over here in this far column, we talked about the idea of um, whether or not we feel that those positions could be covered by ESR funds or the CARES Act um, to help. So I'll, I'll go through those athletics, um, assistant AT position, we gave that a priority of a three. Same with middle school lacrosse, that was a priority of three. We gave that a priority of a three. Same with middle school lacrosse. That was a priority of three. At Carl J. Lamb School, looking at an ed tech three for the support and transitions room. That would be a priority of a two. Trying to get a ed tech for each kindergarten room at Carl J. Lamb. That would, uh, or additional, uh, two additional kindergarten ed texts. A first grade literacy ed tech, an additional one. We talked about earlier before that school counselor. That would also be, uh, there as a two. And then, uh, there was, uh, some potential ads of a fence around that parking lot. So we put that in there as a three. At the high school, uh, looking for an additional art teacher, we put that as a two. The maintenance department, um, as we're looking, uh, for, uh, in there that, uh, having a custo, a full-time custodian that would be shared between the converted elementary school and Sanford Middle School. Margaret Chase Smith, uh, ed tech three for the support and transitions. The two kindergarten ed texts and a first grade literacy ed tech. Those would be for similar to what we had at Carl J. Lamb. And then we also have 10 additional days, uh, for the, uh, school year administrative assistant there due to incoming kindergarten, uh, coming to Carl, uh, um, coming to Mar, uh, for Margaret Chase Smith. And then also at the middle school, a nursing assistant. We gave that a priority of a one. School year administrative assistant, uh, a two. An allied arts teacher, uh, also is a two. Remember, there is a request out there for a sabbatical for a semester. And we also have a math interventionist there, uh, with a priority of a two. At the Sanford Performing Arts Center, uh, we didn't fill that position this year in the budget for the part-time administrative help through the SRTC, um, uh, public, uh, entrance. And so that was something that, uh, we did not put in this year's budget. But it's, uh, in this proposed budget. We didn't put it in the proposed budget. Gave that a priority of a one. And then special education, those three, we currently have a position, uh, at the resource room at MCS. There is no IEP coordinator at Willard. And we also don't have a district-wide psychologist. So those three positions, special education, have been given a one. In technology, also with all this increased technology that we have, uh, through our, um, Corona relief funds, uh, there's also a need for an ed tech three so that we can have people out there being able to assist with the technology throughout the district. That IEP coordinator, Willard, is already covered up above in special education. Administrative assistant, additional 10 days for the school year only. And then also the two kindergarten ed texts, first grade literacy ed tech, um, for that. And then also, uh, right now, we're hoping that through the bond, uh, the local bond will be able to, for the converted elementary school. But we've got that money in there, holding it right now because we also want to make sure that there's no other unexpected expenses, that would come up, that would prevent us from doing that. So those are what we have for potential adds. There is another change from last week. A couple of things around the revenue changes from the presentation we gave last Wednesday. We did have money in there for athletic gate receipts. We're not going to have any athletic gate receipts this year due to COVID. So we had to make that adjustment. But also when you look at our Acton tuition, we have more incoming ninth graders from Acton scheduled than we have for those 12th graders who will be graduating. So that's going to allow us to also put that, uh, for some increased, uh, revenue. And getting back to where we were before, uh, right now, when you put that revenue together with what we have up above, we're now continuing to chip away at that increase. And so it's to 5.2% currently. But remember, uh, as part of that increase is 430,262 as not just this year, we're paying interest and principal. So, um, just wanted to provide you with that update to see if there's any questions and also take any suggestions, thoughts, or guidance or recommendations on how to go forward.
I think.
Hey, Jonathan, you muted. We could tell you were talking away.
And I was very happy because I was right the whole time. No. So if, now you're all listening. So the CARES Act is like a grant, I said it a couple of weeks ago. Is it concerning you moving forward a couple of years when all of a sudden we have to make up for their own funding?
It does. We have to be careful about if we're going to use that money and attach it to positions. I think we have to be pretty clear that, that they, we aren't going to be making any promises or any guarantees for anything beyond when that funding expires.
Right. The other question I had was Acton. Wasn't the Acton, um, enrollment had been declining over the last handful of years? So what, what kind of bump up are you seeing? Like four or five or?
Yeah. Uh, what was that Cheryl? I think it ended up being, was it five students?
It's not earth, it's not earth shattering, but that is good news for us.
Yeah, it was like, I want to say it was six students, but I'll look for it. I don't have.
No, it, 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 it's, it's okay. I, I just, it's good news.
Everybody's moving to Acton.
It's six. So can I ask, when, this just brings me back to like the, one of the last meetings when, um, John Rue said about the city budget. When you're saying, this is, these numbers and this, I don't know, this, um, is it maybe the 380? Is that us hoping that we get a certain amount from the city?
That's for the taxation portion. That's how much the taxation is going up.
Okay.
That, that 2.2 million is what the taxation portion was going to go up. Then if we take out pre-K, it brings it down to the 1.3, et cetera, et cetera. That's the taxation. So that's what they're going to increase the taxation going out to all you taxpayers.
Yeah. Happy to pay it. Happy to pay it.
Oh, see, yeah, this is usually where the conversation goes, is what that bottom line increase, um, the tax bills come.
Okay.
Once we get combined with the city, like the budget committee will start talking, well, what's the mill rate now? And so what's the tax bill going to be? It, it gets a little more convoluted when you get to that point. But, you know, for us, we always seem to kind of zero in on that, that percentage increase. You know, so with that in mind, I mean, my, my viewpoint on this is I think, you know, the 5.2, you know, that's, that's the realistic number. I mean, it's nice to pull that debt out and say, well, hey, operating cost, this is the, the 2.5. But, you know, the bottom line is that's money that was borrowed and it's part of the, the school budget. So that's really, you know, we can't borrow the money, then kind of ignore the fact that we have to pay it back later on. So it's really that 5.2% that I'm looking at. I, I think that needs to be down to the, the three, between three and four, to even be palatable for the budget committee. And I agree with Amy. Me personally, I think education's, uh, worth it and I would pay it. But the rest of the city, a, a good percentage of the taxpayers, I'm sure would not agree with that, uh, sentiment.
So Cheryl, right for us to get it down, um, to get it down from 5.2 to 2.4, we need to cut 380,000?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think that, that's probably too much. But I think if we could try to get to the three and a half to 4% range, like, that's a little bit more palatable, like I said.
Right. So every 100,000 is 0.6%?
So.
If you want to get it at three.
I'm thinking three and a half, four, like, you know what I mean?
Well, Don, you, you know, Amy and Paula, for, for the two of you, what, what Matt and his team will do is ultimately be prepared for, you know, anywhere from four and a half to four to three and a half, three, two and a half, two. They'll know what the dollars mean and where the painful, uh, decisions have to be made. And your input is important also, whether you don't want them to make a cut or you support a cut. So ultimately it'll be a decision, but coming from management's, uh, advice to us.
Hey, so Matt, so the, uh, the stuff up above, those were just pure additions, right? As far as what you thought we could get out of Ezra funds?
Well, and I'm not, I just wanted to let you know, as the budget, the budget as we, as exists, does not include these positions.
Yep.
Okay? And so I wanted to be very upfront of that. Some of those were positions that were, as I said, people thought and recommended. But here we are, even without including those positions, and we're already finding ourselves, um, with an increase.
Yeah, I know. That seems to be a, uh, common theme every year.
Oh, wa- wages and benefits are going to drive it up. Heat, you know, utilities are going to drive it up year after year after year.
Well, that's the same discussion we have where, you know, every one of those positions that you talk about adding, that, that wage and benefit is going to be exponential going forward every year, so.
So to, to, well, back, there was a period of time a few years ago when everybody was talking about zero, you know, zero increase. Well, then you're just, you're just cutting things. You're cutting people and benefits. That's the only way you can do it.
Yeah. And that's why I think everybody's kind of settled in on that, that three, 4% range is something that's sustainable. You know, it's really the cost of living increase. And if you can kind of do that every year, I, I think that's something that works. I would love to, you know, say, hey, we really need this stuff. This stuff we've been talking about for three or four years adding. You know, and I think the administrators aren't just throwing stuff out there to have fluff put in. This is stuff that they legitimately believe that we need for the kids, and we probably do.
Well, it goes, it goes back, it goes back to Beth's, uh, presentation of the student teacher ratio. You know, years ago, it probably was one to 17. And it, why does it grow? Because you eliminate staff and increase the ratio.
And the tough part is that there's a lot of people that are in a really bad spot financially coming out of COVID. You know, so th- this is definitely the year that we try to, we, I think, I personally think we need to try to be as, as thin as possible. Paula, Amy, any thoughts from you guys? I know it's a lot to absorb.
Yeah, it's, um, I just, I feel the weight of the responsibility, right? And the, just the weight of it all. It's hard to talk about, it's hard, first of all, to say, hey, can you give me all the needs you have? And then have to look at the list. And I, I found this breakdown very helpful, by the way, Matt. I really, really appreciate this. It's so hard to then put a priority number on it and then to have to whittle it down. And I, I don't know. It's just, I'm, I'm a little overwhelmed and just, I don't know.
Yeah, I know it's tough because you want to see the best for the kids.
Yeah.
Saying, hey, what do you need to make that happen? And then you could potentially come back and say, oh, well, you're not going to get that, and we're going to take more stuff away from you.
Right. And it's not just the students. I mean, they're definitely our, our focus and our priority. But, you know, the staff that's working their butts off and the administration and just everybody. It's just, it's daunting. It's going to take some, some thought and some time.
So Matt, when we talk about, um, you know, like those certain positions can be paid from the Ezra CARES funds, do we have an idea of how much Ezra Care money is available? I mean, because it sounds like you're still working on the plan for summer schools. You're not quite sure how much the remediation stuff's going to cost. Or maybe you do have kind of a preliminary budget. But I'm, I'm imagining that we can't just add every single one of these that you say could be paid by, with Ezra funds.
No, I think, uh, you're right, Don. We, we didn't put that down there just to say we want to add them all. We just, they're, I think, uh, Cheryl, we had a running total going where we were already up over, uh, what was that total you told me earlier?
Oh, I sent it in an email, like 500 and some odd thousand, 600 and some odd thousand with just those listing in that list that says can be paid by ESRA.
Need estimate.
Yeah. Like five, 649 or 647, something like that.
And what was, what's the total that we're supposed to be getting for ESRA funds?
3.8 million, but that 3.8 million is supposed to save us for three years.
Yeah, it's three years.
You, you don't want to spend it all in the first year. That's my concern.
Yeah, so the, the total just there was 659,670. Now, obviously, some of those are threes and some of those are ones and some of those are twos. In terms, and, and please understand, those priority systems were developed by us. Other people may feel differently about that. In, in terms of, uh, where we're at, a lot of those ones were basically weren't around special education. And some of those other pieces were, um, with that. So that's, uh, that's also knowing that, like Cheryl said, that 656,000 is a yearly cost. And that's, um, these funds are for us for three years.
Hey, hey, Matt, do we have any savings coming in from retirements this year? Because don't we usually kind of have some of that itemized or?
I mean, you always have some, um, I'm not sure we are going to get. I mean, we bring in be, some people that are at that same level or close to it. That's the only problem. You can estimate it, I guess.
Yeah, so right now, Cheryl, when we did put this budget in, those retirements that we knew about, we, do we still have their existing salary and benefits in the, in this budget? Or did we try to project new ones that would be a little less on the scale to kind of capture those savings upfront?
So any of the ones that we knew about prior to mid-November got captured at a lower rate. Any of the ones we found out about after November 15th, um, or there and about, um, got put in at their current rate. So we could see some potential savings, um, there. I could look at those ones that we got after that fact and see if there's any savings there too.
Yeah, and I think what I would probably, uh, guess, Don, is similar to what we saw with Acton, right? There was a swing there, uh, not huge or significant, but definitely headed in the right direction. I think we could find something probably similar, uh, that you're going to find that there's probably some savings there. The question of how much, I'm not sure about. I think we'd want to make sure we're being conservative, but I think we could at least find some savings headed in the right direction.
Yeah, no, I'm sure it's not, you know, the silver bullet that's going to all of a sudden bring us down to 3%, but I was just thinking chipping away a little bit.
I'll, I'll run that for the next, for the next one, for the next meeting.
Yeah. Amy, was that you?
Yeah, um, Matt, I know that these are potential, like, wants and needs. And the sense of cuts that, that, you know, the director's principals have brought to you, is there any, um, that are, like, basically have been added that they're just, the position is gone, someone left, and it's not going to be replaced? That's been kind of added to this side?
Not, uh, not on what you see in front of you, no. No, none, none of these positions that are in front of you have anybody currently in them. Uh, except, uh, we do have the resource room teacher at MCS, which is being, uh, covered by CARES funds. We also have the nursing assistant at the middle school that's being covered by, um, CARES funds. And same thing with the school year administrative assistant. But as I look at those other ones, I don't see anything in there right now that is being covered by, uh, that is in this year's budget, current budget, this year's current, not the proposed.
And I guess, um, maybe some of their cuts, um, I wouldn't even know to give an example, but, um, is, is there a chance to kind of switch them out? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, one of the principals suggests to make this cut. and you're like, you know what, we would agree, but then, you know what, we're gonna add on something else from here, and basically swap swap them out.
I haven't.
Sense, I'm not sure if I'm making sense.
No, I I think I follow you in the sense of there might be ways that we can
Banu maybe?
Make a cut, but also be able to add some other resources for less money in places to help minimize the cut. But right now, I haven't, if the school committee wants to direct me to say that percentage is too high, we'd like to be able to see some potential cuts. I could go back and work with the administrators and and come up with something. I'm not sure I'll be able to pull that off before Wednesday, because if that's something we're gonna do, obviously, I'd like to talk to people who may be impacted by that. I just think that is the right thing to do so that they are not blindsided or surprised. I don't know if there's areas that the school committee wants me to look at as well. That's something that I can take direction as well as we try to be able to continue to bring that percentage increase down.
Yeah, that's something, you know, where we talked about, Matt, with the fact that, you know, this year, we're you know, televising all the budget workshops where previously we would have had the discussion. You would have been able to go and talk to whoever may have been impacted before word got to them. So maybe just to put the disclaimer out to anybody watching right now, you know, first and foremost, we don't want to see anybody lose their position. But if you do pay attention to the whole process and you watch, you know, all of this budget stuff unfold, you can see the position we're at, kind of like Paula was just talking about. You know, it's tough. You want to, I think every single one of us would add as much money as the schools need to be successful, but the reality is we only have so much out there for resources, and we can't burden the Sanford taxpayers anymore than necessary, especially as we're coming on COVID and the the current economic difficulties, so. So if you are, you know, you are watching at some point, you know, probably won't be tonight, but in the future, and we're discussing your position, you know, it's 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 nothing personal. And, you know, please understand that it's just a matter of limited resources. You know, that's what we're talking about, so.
Dawn, you know my position. I'm just still really a big advocate for life skills in general. I I just think this whole public education thing in this budget is just a slow death. That we don't start focusing on life skills with maybe a postgraduate year for those who really want to refine their skills to go on to post-secondary schools. And I see that as, it's inevitable. We're we're wasting a lot of money. But I'll get off my soapbox.
Yeah, so Matt, I think we definitely, I mean, even if we as a school committee decide to kind of move forward with a, you know, a four and a half or a five percent budget going to the budget committee, I I would be very surprised if the budget committee didn't look for a lower percentage increase than that, so. If you don't need it in the process through us, you know, you're gonna need to have those conversations as we go through the budget committee process.
I'm I'm convinced that we all need to be prepared for something much half of the six point two at a minimum.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would anticipate a, you know, two and a half, three percent kind of goal, maybe, you know, three and a half would slide through. But I'd be very surprised if there's anything beyond that.
Is everyone comfortable with any of these proposed cuts, or how we're gonna cover these up here? Or there's any, can we go ahead and make those to get the six point two down to five point two?
Yeah, I am.
And then after the five point two, I I can come back next week once again with some other suggestions. One thing that I'd ask is, and and probably the question's gonna come up, is if we're looking at a cutting up position or cutting positions, the question may come up to say, can we cover those with, for example, Esser funds, knowing to kind of put that off? Or kick it, kick it down the road a little bit in terms of having to make a decision? So I don't know. That's probably a discussion down the line, but that's something else to think about that I think when you're actually talking about the eliminating of positions, is that something saying it's better to eliminate it right now, or would it be better to use these funds to be able to try to hang on, knowing that those funds are eventually going away?
From my point of view on that, Matt, I I think if you can, if you're talking about eliminating it, I think it's something where if we can eliminate it, we eliminate it, because you're gonna have, you're gonna be having the same conversation next year. You know, next year, it's gonna be probably just as tight, if not tighter. And we did have a quick chat question from Ann Hanselman. I don't know if you can see that, Matt. I'm not quite sure I understand it fully, so I don't know if we want to have Ann ask it directly.
I only want clarification, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and why don't you just?
Yeah, thank you, and I'm sorry to, thank you for letting me just ask the question. When you look at using that twenty thousand, three oh six carryover, I'm just wondering, to me, that seemed like a net impact, you know, net zero impact, because you have to then reduce the carryover funds that are over on the revenue side. That's my only, and it's a really small amount, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Well, I think I do. Right now, we do not have any carryover funds budgeted in this budget. You know, to to make that. We do have, based on our last audit, we have over nine hundred thousand dollars in carryover. That was something that we didn't put carryover in last year's budget because we became short from the year before. And so there, there is that piece that you could come in in terms of using that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matt, with a follow up. When I had written my notes down from the numbers presented at the first workshop, I think, I had a one million, seventy-five thousand dollar carryover. Did I write that down incorrectly?
Um, no, I think, remember, we also had to make up something like a two hundred thousand dollar shortfall. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Hold on, but you're saying the carryover isn't in the revenue side? I'm sorry to derail your conversation. I can circle back later as well.
No, no, I think it's good to notice, right? Cheryl, we do not have any carryover right now in our revenue.
No, we currently say we have no draw on fund balance or no draw on the carryforward in our budget. And the current carryforward is nine seventy-three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ian, Ian, I would rather hear you now than, you know, in March, so I appreciate you participating. You bet.
Yeah, you're like a good litmus test for us, Ann, for the budget committee.
And I think, and what Ann knows, and I I think others too are veterans here, is, you know, when I first came to Sanford, we had situations where we did have carryover after not maybe ever having carryover. And it was a pretty healthy carryover. And what we ended up doing was we put that tour into the budget towards tax relief, and that worked until we didn't make that carryover number. Right? People remember that? And so right now, knowing that we didn't hit our carryover number, and we actually had a shortfall around that, last year, we did not put forward a budget with any carryover. So now we're back where we were able to, because once we had, once we had that deficit, we immediately put a budget freeze into place. And then we also had COVID hit last year where there were also savings because of that. So that that's where our hesi- my hesitancy is to come back and to rely on that money. You know what our auditors suggest for us to be able to have? It becomes a little bit tricky for us to be able to use that number. Here, in this case, using twenty thousand, three hundred and six dollars for items that I think are really, in some cases, one-time purchases. I think that is is why I'm recommending to do that.
Matt, I don't I don't think you need to sell, not to sell me, I like a rainy day fund, carryover, you can call it that, but I'd rather make the hard cuts now and have a rainy day fund for the emergency that you haven't anticipated.
And can I just be clear, Matt, when, before Ann was speaking, were you suggesting, I might have it completely wrong, were you suggesting us not using Esser funds for the ones that said can be paid by?
No, what what I was saying was, there's still, before we even get to these Esser funds, okay, for positions, we still have cuts that need to be made in our budget so that percentage could come down to something that would be lower. And so right now, the question I have is, I gotta go to work and look in our existing budget to see if there are. And we're at a point now where what you see above you, and I presented tonight, is we've made our cuts. Now, anything further probably has to come from personnel or come from positions. And so if I'm gonna recommend those positions, there's gonna be an impact that comes with that. And the question I was throwing out there was, would we want to, instead of cutting those positions this year, would we cover them with Esser funds, knowing that they're eventually gonna go out, right? Kind of just say, hey, this is a position that's gonna be cut. Do we want to cut it now, or do we want to cut it later? And so one of the things, I think it was Jonathan and Dawn who mentioned, that may be something to say, let's cut it now. And then these other things we could look at for some Esser funds, knowing that they may be, yeah, they may be
Short term?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So it's challenging. I I, right now, I I've kind of, you know, here we have what we have. I'm willing to take any direction of where people want to go and what we want to come back in for next step. For Wednesday, we're gonna have, Dawn Nichols is gonna come in, our director of facilities and maintenance, and Dawn is going to present that budget, similar to how Beth did a nice job tonight presenting the curriculum budget. Next Monday, we'll have Stacy Bissel come in to present the special education budget and overview for that. And then the following Wednesday, we'll have Joan Wright will come in to kind of give us an overview on technology. So in the meantime, we can be working to try to go back and see if there's some other recommendations I could come forward with with positions. Like I said, my hope here is, just because you talk about a position, doesn't mean it's gonna get cut either. It's just coming in to be able to have options and dialogue. And like it's already been said earlier tonight, we're at a point where I'm not sure I like any of our options. None of them are easy.
Yeah, hey, Matt, for me, I'm gonna continue on kind of the the direction we've talked about for the last few years and focusing on giving more funding and resources to the elementary to build up, so that leaves the high school as a potential target. And one thing I think is is interesting, and I've always kind of struggled with this, like that first, the staffing sheet that you put out, where you can see that there's, you know, sixty kids in fourth grade, there's three teachers, so the ratio is one to twenty. But then when you got to the high school, I've never really seen a good quantification of what the workload is for the high school teachers. So we don't really have numbers to look at to be able to say quantitatively, hey, well, you know, all the math teachers at the high school have a full day's work. You know, I've never in my entire time of a school committee felt like we really had a solid handle on that. And I don't know if there is an easy way to do that, but that's kind of the struggle that I have.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's an easy way either, Dawn. That's the nature of high school. Obviously, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison when you look at it for the elementary, because you have different levels, different courses that could come in that kind of ebb and flow a little bit with that. I know over time, you know, you don't always see that, but the the enrollment at Sanford High School, similar to throughout the district, has decreased over time. And so we've tried to right-size that. What you'll oftentimes see is sometimes when there is a position opening where someone might leave us or someone retires, those may be positions that don't automatically get filled, because we are trying to do our best to pay attention to those student-teacher ratios. So that is some information I might be able to dig into a little bit deeper and bring a, bring a bring some data to you, but also realize that it's not as simple as just on the paper, because when you start talking about high school and different schedules and different classes, there is some context to it as well. So, yeah.
I get that. I just kind of wanted to verbalize my thought process there. Hopefully, I did an okay job of it.
Well, Dawn, I, you you did fine, and I'll I'll back you up, because I I think it's well beyond high time that we demand that information, because a great deal of our energy and effort goes into high school-related matters when we hear virtually nothing from elementary. And the school committee for years has said, we want to support elementary education, and we're struggling to do that because we don't have enough money. So I do think that the student-teacher ratio at the high school is, we need to know that and soon.
And I would go along with what Dawn said also, just in the sense of elementary, these kids are learning core information that they need to even meet, you know, to even get to the middle school and the high school. And so, you know, we've got to be picking away at giving them a smaller ratio with an extra ed tech so that you know, in their twenty-minute break, they can, you know, because some some teachers end up staying extra with kids, you know, to help them with their reading or their writing while the other kids, you know, like, it's just, I don't know, I agree, I agree with what Dawn and John were saying.
You'll go far, Amy, as long as you just keep agreeing with us.
Okay, we'll go. Well, then I'm gonna jump on that bandwagon and say that I I agree. I think the more that we support and help the elementary schools, just the the better it'll be for middle school and high school. I mean, there's no doubt about that.
Well, and I guess not to, you know, just pick on the high school, too. There's also, you know, special ed's another big chunk. But that's, like, I consider that more nebulous than the high school even is. And I thought it was interesting when we were talking curriculum that, you know, special ed kind of does its own curriculum thing. That raises the question of, okay, how well does that match up with the other curriculum? So if a kid transitions out of special ed, you know, into the high school, you know, curriculum track, that, you know, is it not, is it not matching up well? I mean, maybe it is, maybe it's not. There's just a lot of questions I've always had with special ed. And it's complicated, you know, I'm not taking anything away from that. But it's also a huge chunk of the budget. You know, so is is there something in there? You know, we're looking to find just a little bit here and there. I mean, I'm talking about, you know, retirements, like, hey, can we save ten thousand from this position and ten thousand from that if they retire? You know, it it's it's rough that we're at the point where we're kind of like picking away here and there, you know, it just shows how tight the budget already is, so.
Yeah, and I know last year, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but we we presented a budget to the budget committee, and they did ask us to come back with a couple proposals with certain percentage decreases with that. And we did do that, and though, and when we start doing that, Dawn, that's where sometimes that point of, well, what do you save in retirements, for example? That might be able to come back and really help you push that to that level. We were very appreciative last year because the budget committee, when they gave us two options, they took the one with the not the biggest cut, but the least cut out of the two options. And so those are things that we can look at. But right now, yeah, you've given me some direction here, and we'll go back. I think we may have something for Wednesday moving in the right direction, but more than likely, especially with me quarantining right now, it looks like it'll probably be next Monday where we could come back. And that may make sense because Stacy's also scheduled to talk about special ed, because that is such a it's such a big part of our budget.
Well, yeah, and I I think it's important to have, like, you know, Beth coming in and talking about curriculum was great. You know, especially with Amy and Paula being new, but, I mean, I don't want to speak for Jonathan, but I got a lot out of that, too, just listening to Beth talk. So it'll be good to hear from everybody else that we have slated. So it'll be good to hear from everybody else that we have slated.
Okay, are there any other requests, uh, for future meetings, starting with next Wednesday or after that people, information that they'd like to have? Or, uh, we can get for them?
Um, I'm, again, I don't know if this is a, a completely naive, um, suggestion or question, but it, during this whole process, i- is there a, a thought to, I, I under- and I've said this before, uh, other times that we've all spoken, but I know that everything comes down to money, money makes the world go round, and that's how it is. But is there a way to try to combat some of these challenges by rearranging things? Or thinking outside of the box to come up with some non-monetary answers? And has that been discussed with, you know, I don't know, the department heads and the administrators for each school? Or is that something that is done before, that has already been covered before we get the list of asks? Or is that something that can be brought up again? Or maybe, um, toss it in as a way to be creative, considering the crazy times that we're in?
But we, we haven't done that in this particular time, Paula. Usually what would happen is, we'll take information as these meetings go on and we'll usually work it with our administrators to get their input and to see exactly where we can come back and see if there's ways that we can come in. There, we do come at this with a creative approach. Uh, you know, one thing I've always said is, it may not always be, and, and Jonathan mentioned this earlier, we gotta be careful because the system that we fall into is unsustainable. And so if it's something where you just can't continue to add and add and add, there may be some things that you would come back and say, okay, here is some resources we put towards here. But right now, what if we had those resources freed up to go somewhere else or i- in a different direction, uh, with that? So yeah, some of that is, has been going on, we can try to come back and see. If, uh, I'm guessing there might have to be some creativity here, just because we've reached a point over time where we're already lean. We, we've been able, you know, it wasn't last year's budget, but two years ago, uh, we had to cut eleven positions. That was not a lot of fun in terms of having to come back and be able to do that. In the past, we've tried to, uh, uh, also, since then, to try to say, how can we be able to, uh, instead of always add, 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 can we look at things, of reallocating things differently? So we'll continue to have that lens on, uh, with that. Um, you might see some, some proposals to you coming, uh, out of that, where you could say, okay, um, there might not be a, um, something that we can cut totally right from this area, but we might be able to do a half of this and half of that, for example. Still be able to maintain what we have, but also attain some savings.
Hey, Matt, to Pa- Paula to answer your, your thought, you know, I, I, you do think, have to think outside of the box. I, I think when we talk generally recently, um, the teacher input is really important. Um, I, it, the, the opposing argument about, uh, teacher ratio, student-teacher ratio, if we have, it's like, think of college, one large class of freshman English. And that's just an example, uh, in the SPAC, you know, fifty students to one. And I think the response I got from, you know, Steve Walker, who said, who wants to teach fifty freshmen? Well, I, 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 I don't know, but it's a thought. I, I, I talked about adult ed a couple of weeks ago. I think there's an opportunity there, not to overwhelm adult ed, but I, I, we have to start thinking outside of the box or it's, again, it's not sustainable.
And, and we're at a point just where everything that we do is gonna be felt in some way. It's gonna, it's gonna be felt, there's gonna be an impact, and as we've all talked about, it is, we're at a point where none of it feels good, uh, with that. But at the end, that's the challenge that's in front of us so that we can be able to continue to do our best to meet the needs of our students, support our staff, but at the same time, also, uh, be careful of the burden that we're placing on taxpayers.
You know, one thing that I, you know, going along with what Jonathan just said about, you know, staff, I, I do feel it would be helpful to hear from the school principals. Um, and just, I guess, I would have to gather my thoughts about what exactly I would want them to come and talk to us about. But I think it would be more like, how are their staff doing? How is it, when I'm looking at, you know, their needs and the school, you know, when it says like two ed techs here? I'm, I'm just looking at Carlin because it's the first one. An ed tech three, two ed techs, another ed tech, a school counselor, uh, not the fence. But, you know, and then the other, the other elementary schools, when they're asking, you know, and like the, the secretary needing to come in ten days, to me, that's a given, like, you know what I mean? And so I guess maybe, and then hearing from, you know, the middle school and the high school and just kind of hearing like, how, how, just it kind of puts it a little bit more, um, a face to a name than just numbers?
Are you saying, um, I think I know what you're getting at, which is, instead of just looking at numbers on a sheet, you're actually really getting like the temperature, the climate of what is really happening?
And why they need all these ed techs?
Sure. Dawn, Dawn, Dawn and, uh, Dawn and Jonathan know, we could always bring Sharon Remmick back, Sherrick Rem- Sharon Remmick back, uh, because she was always one who was really, you know, at the end of the day, when you're looking at those ed techs for our kindergarten and the literacy ed techs for first grade, one of the challenges that we're finding, um, Amy and Paula, and we've heard this uh, from our, uh, teachers and from our administrators, is the kids who are coming to us uh, right now are, um, there's more challenging behavior with kids coming to us who may not be ready to learn in kindergarten, first grade, to meet the expectations that we have. And you heard, uh, Dawn and, and Jonathan talk earlier about how the focus is, those are the times you want to intervene. Those are the times. And so, and we also had, uh, I think there was a time years ago where kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers all had an ed tech in their classroom. And then there was tight budget years, and then they went away. And then realizing how much of an impact and how helpful they were, we brought those back. But we were only able to do it in wa- share one for every two classrooms. Rather than having one for each of those classrooms, we had one for two. And so I think that's where you're finding a lot of people saying, that's where the request comes from. Can we ever get back to where we had? I'm not sure how realistic that is, just based on our reality in front of us and the discussion that we've had tonight for it. Those other ed techs we look for, Amy, the support in transitions. We realize right now that there's kids that we want to be able to help them and navigate through uh, some of the challenges that they're having so that it's not impacting the learning of others. But it also is not coming from a punitive standpoint of trying to look at, it's more of a restorative piece, being able to have the resources to be able to build that and do it right and intervene. Once again, very important, we'd love to have that. But when you're looking at some of the challenges that we're having, is that something that we've done without before? Is that something that we, um, you know, really need, um, for it? So I wouldn't put anything on these potential ads that I didn't think had at least somewhat of a, of a a case or some support. The challenge once again is, where are the funding? In this particular case, for some of these, we do have some funds through the ESSER that that's where we're gonna have to say they're not unlimited. Those were some of the hard decisions will come in to say, this is where we want to prioritize to be able to try to, um, to use those funds.
I will say in a personal note, and I'm sure Paula would agree, because her kids are around my, my kids' ages, is that some of my kids got to benefit from the ed techs in the kindergarten level and some did not. And there, personally, I could see the difference.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, at the end of the day, we, that, that's a real big impact.
Yeah.
Uh, to be at those ages, to be able to do that on, a- and we're talking about our students and sometimes you hear the focus of where people are not where they're supposed to be. It's also meeting the needs of those kids who are where they're supposed to be, want to continue to also prosper and grow as well. So it's, it's, uh, you know, as we're trying to meet the needs of the students who are in front of us, any extra resources we have, that's usually a good thing, and that's an advantage.
Okay, well, I think, uh, we had a lot of information tonight, um, so that's good. It sounds like, Matt, you've got the direction you need moving forward now?
I got some, yeah, I think, and I, I think, uh, obviously, this is a, you know, I'm sure like others, later on, we'll be thinking about something, and there may be some other ideas or thoughts that come up. So I would encourage people to reach out to me if those, with those ideas or questions or thoughts that come up, rather than probably waiting to our next meeting, just as people have had some time to reflect. But, you know, it's a process and it's difficult, but I, I've got some work here. Uh, we have an administrators' meeting on Wednesday, the, a budget update is, uh, one of our major agenda items. And so we'll continue to be able to push on that to see, uh, if there's any other ideas or suggestions that can come forward.
Okay, um, so with that, any final questions, comments from anybody? I'll take that as a no, we're gonna wrap it up for tonight. Thanks, everybody, for your time. Get ready for the snow, Matt's gonna prepare himself to, uh, call a snow day tomorrow.
Please.
I, I think you'll be lynched if you don't, Matt, just a little bit of, uh, friendly advice.
I might be, uh, that decision may be made, uh, sooner than tomorrow morning, so.
I think a big fat snowflake's falling right now, actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Blizzard's in my house. Call it, thank you.
I was hop- I was hoping to get to the weather forecast on TV, but I missed that, so that's all right, we'll do that, um.
You know, they put it on the internet now, Matt?
Yeah, no, I, I know that, I know that. Um, and then, um, yeah, I'll take a, uh, also a motion to adjourn.
I take a motion to adjourn.
Amy's gonna make the motion, do I have a second? Hey, Paula, you should second it. Paula seconds it. Boy, I have to call everybody because we're on Zoom. Uh, Amy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Jonathan? Is that a yes?
He's muted, but he's.
He's muted, we're, we can see your mouth moving, I can't tell if it's a yes or a no.
I'm, I'm thinking about it, yes.
And I'd vote yes as well, so we are adjourned, thanks, everybody. Enjoy the snow tomorrow, stay safe.
Thank you.